Good morning. It's Tuesday, March 19th, and we're here for the Story County Board of Supervisors' regular Tuesday meeting. I will call it to order. Would those of you who care to join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
...
Okay, I'd like to begin here with public comment number one. Is there anyone interested in coming up and making a comment about either something on today's agenda or something else that you'd like to bring up first thing this morning? Seeing no from the two members of the public, so we'll go ahead and we'll move on to agency reports. And we're going to start with Lutheran Services in Iowa. Alyssa Barton. Good morning. Yes, please come sit right up there. And we ask you to speak directly into the long neck mouth mic. It is a little sensitive and I really like you to talk right into it. Thanks, Alyssa.
No problem. So I'm the Service Coordinator for Lutheran Services in Iowa's Early Childhood Programming, and with Story County funds, that helps fund our Crisis Child Care Program. And just a brief overview of what that is. We work with families in Story County that have children ages zero to 12 and are experiencing a crisis. They call our phone. We have it on 24/7. Once we make touch with them, we do an enrollment process with them. We call our in-home registered daycare providers that we work with throughout Story County to see if anybody can help that family during their crisis to place their child with them for up to 72 hours. So this fiscal year, July till the end of February, we have done 1,246.25 hours in Story County, and that is with 14 different families and 28 different children. And this year, we've exhausted our Story County funds. And so that just kind of shows that it is still a much-needed program, in that this year, we've actually exceeded what we did last year by 105 hours. And that's just through the end of February, so we still have a couple months left going. But one of the challenges that we have been facing this year, that we've started to kind of keep track of, because we do serve both Story and Boone Counties, so between the two, we've actually had to turn away 17 different families. The majority of those are Story County families because of the crisis, or the childcare crisis in Story County, meaning that there are more children being born than there are childcare spots. So we have a lot of our providers that, when they used to not always be full, they could take our kids during the daytime. Now, they're full constantly. And the second they have a kid drop out, or whatever the case is, they're full again. So during the daytime, it's been extremely tough for us to place children. And so actually, during the nights and weekends is our best shot for placing a child, which is actually the opposite of most programs. Usually, weekends and nights are the hardest. And so that's what we have run into, especially with the number of childcare providers decreasing in Story County. So that's just something that we advocate for, and that we like to show the public, to make them aware if they don't know that that's going on. And so we are seeing an increased number of people that we've had to turn away. We've never had to turn away that many people that I can remember, but we never really started actually keeping track until this year, noticing that the pattern had kind of started last year. So that's just a challenge that we always like people to be aware of in the community. But otherwise, we've been able to serve a lot of families in Story County this year, and it's been a program, and without your guidance funds, you know, those 28 kids might have been in a different situation. So we thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was nice and kind of put all of your information together. Board, any comments or questions?
Who else, what other agencies or units of government fund your program?
What other agencies? So we get asset funding and we get boost funding.
Okay.
For the ACI Board, yeah.
So all of it's either asset?
Mm-hmm.
And you said you utilize the county funds totally?
Yep.
Do you have other funds yet available for this fiscal year?
Yes, we do. Not much.
Not much, okay.
Because obviously, so last year, we didn't do as many hours, so we didn't get as much funds. And so we're almost to the end. But, you know, one example is January, we did 625 hours of care, which is the most we've ever done in a given month throughout the years. February, we did zero hours. So that's how much crisis care fluctuates, because you, of course, never know when somebody's going to be in a crisis. So I'm assuming we're going to use up the rest of our funds for this year, but obviously, I can't say for sure, so.
And once you get a referral, do you have an average time, how long it takes you to get a child placed and for a child?
It depends on the need. So sometimes, we have a family, like for instance, we had a mom who had a scheduled C-section. So we knew this was the date that she needed care, so we had time to kind of call as many people, you know, so that's a different timeframe. Then if we have somebody called that needs placement that night, then we start calling immediately to find a place, especially if, you know, they need help transporting, that sort of thing. So sometimes, a crisis can be scheduled, and sometimes it's not. So if it's an immediate situation, we call immediately and we place that child as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
Well, I did, although your response to Supervisor Merkin kind of made me realize how many layers there are to the situation, because I was going to ask about if there was increased funding, you know, would that address it? But if there's no availability of a provider, it really doesn't matter how much money there is.
Right.
Right? So it's us continuing to look to some of the nonprofit agencies and the asset admin team, et cetera, to try and see how, moving forward, suggestions on how to increase providers. Just one more on a big list.
Right.
Yes, okay. All right. But thank you for your efforts, because that has got to be tough, to get a call at four in the afternoon and find out you need to put a child somewhere in three hours. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Keith Morgan, our quarterly emergency management report. Have a good day, Alyssa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Although winter months are supposed to be our easier time, continual winter weather events in February and March have challenged my office. For instance, on February 24th and 25th, Story County faced one of the most powerful winter storms we've had in a long time. And our office began to coordinate messaging almost immediately to let the public sector know the risk that was impending, and to give them some ideas on how they might mitigate that risk. We also started working with Ames Convention and Visitor Bureau to monitor hotel availability, which did not look good. The information on the room availability pushed us to go ahead and contact our RAPs, the Rapid Action Teams for Sheltering, to kind of put them on standby should we need shelter. At 10:00 AM on Sunday, I-35 did close with a little advance notice to us. And we immediately activated the plan that we had put together for this. This plan directs cars to South 16th, where there's the hotel rooms, and also tries to push the semis to go down to Hilton Coliseum. And we've coordinated with Iowa State University to try and keep that parking lot open, so we have a place to have those semis go to. Our amateur radio and emergency service group began to broadcast on CBs directions to the truckers, so that they would know where to go when they got up here. And as the storm progressed, we continued to collect information and disseminate it. We put out on our Facebook page, an update on Monday morning on the road conditions, which reached over 32,000 people. Oftentimes, I've kind of pondered how difficult it is for many to understand what emergency management is, and why it's necessary to invest time and resources into emergency management. And I think our response to this winter storm, which integrated many different agencies across all of Story County, demonstrates why pre-planning, training, and exercises, often led by our department, is an investment that pays off. As I've also indicated, excuse me, there were issues discussed in the after accident that still need to be addressed. The expansion of the integration of our plan into the overall Iowa DOT, I-35 closure plan is one place where we need to do some work. Also, improved training for those that activate the plan, and development of contingency parking plans, should Iowa State be having a sporting event at the same time we're trying to put semis in that parking lot. All our after action items that we will be working on in the near future. Another area that we're working on is disaster assessment and volunteer management. It's an area where we are
Keith, before you go there, let's just take a second there. How was our response from those we rely on? And I'm thinking specifically of what you can tell us about Red Cross, but I know I felt some frustration.
We did have some issues with Red Cross. Our plan was pretty specific that if we had one or two individuals that were stranded, that the Red Cross has a process where they can provide vouchers to those individuals, so they might be sheltered. And we had a situation like that in Story City. When we went to activate that process, which is in the plan, and which was discussed in October, as we always review the plan before the season starts, they refused to do that. So we had a law enforcement officer up in Story City who, out of his own pocket, paid for that sheltering. It's one of the areas that we're going to be looking at, because if we have these reviews of the plans, and if there are roles and responsibilities, we've got to depend on those people to follow through on. So we will be having discussions. We are going to look at what our options are to be able to make sure that we don't have something like that happen again. Another example of how we're constantly working through emergency management cycle of planning, preparing, response, recovery, is our efforts to improve our damage assessment and volunteer management. Last summer, we assisted Polk County during their floods, and we got a chance to observe processes they use to handle damage assessment. Damage assessment is important in a number of different places. It allows us to determine at first the situation, so we can get the right resources to the right places. Long-term, it allows us to take volunteers and then assign them to needs that are out there, and also to develop a recovery plan for the community that might be impacted. Along with that, we also heard from our partner, the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, about their experiences with volunteer management after the Marshalltown tornado. Both of these, through both of these events, we identified new processes that could be used here in Story County to improve our capabilities to respond and recover from a disaster. On the damage assessment side, the deputy, Melissa Spencer, has been working with Homeland Security, Ames, and Story County GIS, and also our Secondary Roads and Conservation folks, to integrate a new damage assessment app. We're going to capitalize on technology to allow folks to go out there onsite, do what used to be done by paper, have it feed automatically into an overall spreadsheet that will allow us to both graphically demonstrate where the damages occur, and also to allow us to electronically capture the scale and scope of those damages. She has put together a beta version of how we're going to integrate this, and she's putting together a training package, so that we can work and use Secondary Roads and Conservation as our guinea pig. And if it works well, then we're going to roll it out for the entire county. Meanwhile, I've been working with RSVP to integrate an online form to capture information about potential volunteers, spontaneous volunteers, so that we can get the right volunteers to the right place as quickly as possible. Together, RSVP and Emergency Management will be testing this on March 30th, as they have one of their volunteer management exercises. The linchpin for our own operations is our Emergency Operations Center, as you well know. And the most important part of our Emergency Operations Center is not the computers, it's not the phones, it's the staff that we have inside of there. And because the skills and knowledge of those staff is essential, and it is perishable, we go ahead and conduct regular training. In January and February, Melissa conducted three one-and-a-half-hour training sessions to refresh our staff on the use of the tasking sheets and the Web U.S.E. system. Again, thanks to Story County Departments and Offices, which allowed their staff to participate in this training. In January, we also saw the final session of the Story County COOP-COG workshop. I'm sure that was fun and exciting for everybody. The session concentrated on the implementation of the steps that are needed to collect for you the damages that have occurred across multiple facilities and departments, and to collate that so that your COOP-COG management team can make some very, very important decisions rapidly with the information that's available, which is going to be incomplete. The workshop experimented with some processes, and it also highlighted some gaps in procedures. But I've seen that your staff is already working to plug these gaps and correct these deficiencies, and that's very commendable. Finally, our office has been working hard to develop a Business Resiliency Committee here in Story County. The committee is a collaborative effort of the Ames Chamber of Commerce, Safeguard Iowa, and our office, Story County Emergency Management. We've also enjoyed the support of Supervisor Sanders, as we have pitched this effort to businesses throughout the community. Our first step was to send out a survey monkey to try and determine the risks that's out there, the level of preparedness amongst the different businesses. We were pleased to have 90 of our businesses respond to the survey, actually over 90 businesses, which provided us some very valuable information on where they're at, and what areas they would like us to help them out, and to concentrate our efforts on as we move forward. And that's enough looking back. Now let's look forward. In about a week, it'll be severe weather awareness week. I encourage Story County Departments and Offices to use this as a chance to pitch individual preparedness, to ensure their staff can take care of their family, and also continue to support operations here during the disaster. Additionally, on Wednesday, March 27th, there will be a statewide tornado. This is a perfect opportunity for all Story County facilities to test their ability to receive a tornado warning, disseminate the warning throughout the building, and to react to the simulated threat appropriately. One relatively new concern of our office is the African swine fever. It's a disease that does not affect humans, but it is deadly to hogs. Fortunately, the disease is not currently in North America, but it is in Africa, Europe, and Asia, to include China, which is one of our main trade partners when it comes to pork and pork product. Our office is representing local emergency management during workshops hosted by the Iowa Department of Land Stewardship and Agriculture, and we will work with the Iowa Pork Producers Association as they develop response plans. We will keep you advised on any issues that could affect Story County with reference to this potential threat. Through the next quarter, we will be conducting planning on our communications, public information plans, damage assessment and volunteer management, pet sheltering, and school emergency planning. In addition, we will also be participating in exercises related to communications, terrorism, hazmat, and child abduction. And of course, we're going to be monitoring weather. I hope my review of how the work done before an event is critical to preventing or reducing the impact of disasters. I hope it also reinforces, in your mind, the value of a proactive approach to preparedness for individuals, business, and government. Our office looks forward to working with Departments and Offices to ensure they are able to respond to the call for assistance during a disaster. With that, I open it up to any questions.
Keith, if you wouldn't mind spending just a second and give my partners kind of the nightmare scenario on swine fever.
Swine fever, as I indicated, has been identified first in Africa. There are even some countries in Europe, and like I said, Asia. This is a disease, it's a virus that is a pretty resilient virus. So if it does get into our system, it will be pretty difficult to get rid of it. The first step would be, if it is spotted in North America or in the United States, is that they will probably do a 12-hour period where anything that's on the road with any sort of swine in it would be allowed to move to its final location. After that, they'll do a period of traceback to figure out where the first premise that has the disease has had any connections with any other premises, because the concerns of it spreading to those premises. After that, and during that timeframe, there will be a lockdown of the travel of swine across the United States. One potential area of problems for us is if there are trucks that are transiting our area, it may be that their destination is not going to accept it. So we'll have these trucks with hogs on them that won't be accepted where they were at, can't get back to where they're going. After that, if the premise would happen to be here in Story County or in Iowa, it'll be quarantined. And they will go ahead and try and do those tracebacks, but they will probably have to depopulate that premise, and also will have to do carcass disposal for those premises. On a broader scale, something like this could be absolutely economically devastating for our agriculture. And there is a possibility that producers might walk away from their herds, because they cannot afford to keep them. Many of these issues would fall upon Story County if it should happen here.
Would we, in that situation, be able to call upon the National Guard or reserves to help handle that depopulation?
When it comes to requests for assistance from the state, we formulate what the mission is, and then they determine what the resource may be. It could be the National Guard, if they were the ones to have the equipment that we needed, or the personnel. They have changed their focus when it comes to a quarantine. They're not going to lock down a large geographical area, they're going to concentrate on suspected premises. But some of the other items, again, such as carcass disposal, there may be resources that we would go up to the state.
This reminds me a little bit when the bird flew. I had a friend who worked at the disease laboratories, and they could not figure out for a while how it was spreading. And then a crew happened to be out at a farm and watched a neighbor pull up and drive on the driveway, and there were feathers on the tires. And they figured out it was spreading in this particular area, because the farming community was still socializing with each other. And so even though they never drove through their quarantine areas, there still was debris up. So it really, after hearing that story, makes me very concerned about how quickly any type of flu is dangerous or does it spread.
Monday, I'll be working with the Iowa Pork Producers Association, and one of their main efforts is going to be on the biosecurity for the supply chain. And they're going to be addressing things like that. The larger operations, while they are more interconnected, have much more structured processes and biosecurity, both to entry into a site even before anything like this is identified, to ensure that they can try and prevent as much as possible the spread of this and many other diseases. This is not the only threat that we face. There could be foot and mouth disease, many other diseases that are out there. And it is one area that Iowa and across the nation, we need to get much better at, because when something like this happens, the international market shuts down almost immediately.
If a site is abandoned, whose responsibility is it to get it cleaned up and handle it?
In our last exercise with IDALs, I asked that question, and it does fall to the county. So you may become owners of a pork production facility. And again, it doesn't have to be one that is a suspect premise. If we had a major drop in pork prices, they're running on such a fine margin. Or even if they just have to stop movement for an extended period, these operations have a very thin margin of being able to adjust to something like this.
Okay, well, thank you. I assume that the Emergency Management Group will continue to move forward in trying to figure out how to react to that being
I do have one question.
Yes.
Is IDALs doing a plan for the entire state, or will our county be doing its own plan?
IDALs is doing a plan for the entire state. And part of the problem is, this is a nationwide incident the moment that it is announced. And there are many different philosophies across, first off, many different states, as to how they're going to handle it. IDALs is working it locally within Iowa. And unlike most disasters, which start locally and work their way on up, this is one that comes in sideways. They will be the lead for it. They are the lead regulatory agency when it comes to it. But there has been a shift more towards the producer taking care of the depopulation and carcass disposal than what had previously been out there. So this is something that we're working with IDALs on, to make sure that we'll know what our roles and responsibilities are, what are the producers' roles and responsibilities, and how that'll all integrate.
Will IDALs be finding sites for disposal of carcasses, or is that something our county needs to look at doing?
We discussed that during the last workshop. It will be pretty much the producers' issues. There is some maps that we have looked at as to if you're going to bury the carcasses, where that is permissible. And again, it's multiple layers. DNR has a say in something like that, as do we locally, and also, you know, there are other different factors that would come into play.
So as the planning goes along, it'll mesh more, and you'll figure out what the county needs to take a lead on, and what IDALs is.
Yes, and also some of the legal options that we would have, and also to look and see if there are any special powers that maybe Story County supervisors need to have to be able to enact, have them in reserve, and with the declaration of a local disaster, that they could be implemented.
A couple of weeks ago, I asked Deb Shildroff if she would take on the project of looking at those types of powers we may need or use. And I believe that she was taking them to the COOP-COG Committee or whatever. So I trust that they'll come back. And I started with some documents that Melissa Spencer had already provided. And so hopefully, we're on the right path there. So just to let you know. Anything else from either of you? I have one more thing. I happened to, during our stormy period, okay, hear Melissa Spencer on a local radio station. And I just want to tell you what an excellent job she did. She got that information out there, made it interesting. People were already interested, but I mean, the information really flowed. And I just want to let you know that I was very impressed with how she handled the interview and the information flow, so.
She's also the go-to person when it comes to Facebook. A computer caveman like myself is probably not the best lead for that, but she has dragged me into the 21st century. And that is one of the great tools we have, but it was also a huge resource, I'm not going to say drain, but requirement for us to constantly update Facebook. And that's something we're going to have to look at, because, and we may need to partner with some of the other public information operations folks around here, because during a large-scale disaster, while we're also coordinating response resources, we're not going to have the capability to devote the time to Facebook to also keep the public advised.
Well, thank you. Thank you, what you do. Okay. All right, let's move on to consideration of minutes. Take a motion?
Move approval of both.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? No. Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Next, personnel.
I would move approval as listed.
Second.
Right. Merkin?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Consideration of claims.
I would move approval of claims as presented.
Second.
Merkin?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Olson? Did I skip claims? I just did. Yeah, okay. All right. And we're moving on to public hearing items. So I welcome Lucy Martin and Ethan Anderson. Oh, Lysa's, Markley's sitting down for this one, huh?
I'll let them have it.
Okay, all right. Good morning, both of you.
Good morning. So this morning, you're having a public hearing for consideration of Resolution 1995. This is $3 million for Storycom. You did pass a resolution on the 26th to publish this. This was lawfully published in the three official papers of county. And the resolution contains the code sections that you are allowed to borrow money for. This is essential county purpose, so it doesn't have to go to a referendum. And this resolution essentially sets the stage, you've already included it as your budget that you approved last week. And this is just formalizing that levy approval, and to allow the public to have input as part of the public hearing. Ethan had anything to add?
I think Lucy's done a great job, according to plans with the statutory framework here in the 331, 402, and 441. 331, 402, and 441, and then I would 76, which requires us to publish the hearing and then hold a public hearing and then be sure the resolution comes out here before you begin.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call the public hearing to order, I guess, as a click here. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to address this? Seeing no one, address the microphone. I'm going to close the public hearing and turn to the board for questions or discussion. Laura.
Does this set a term for the bond agreement?
No. It allows us to use a levy, and we have included what the annual, I think the dollars levied is for a 10-year term, which is what we anticipate using, but it doesn't set the actual term per se.
Yeah, so I'm confused by that. If it's a 10-year term and it says we want to produce the amount of $268,000, 268,881 is what's listed in here, and I just do the quick math of 10 years, that's only $2.6 million. And so I was having, I thought we were going 10 years, but the amount in here confuses me in terms of how we're getting to $3 million. And so I just was wondering what I'm missing.
Turn it over to my... Guys, how much we're showing as a levy for next year as far as a payment out of debt service? So there could have been some payment out of other areas to make the, it's a 10-year, it's calculated on 10 years, but we know nothing. We don't know how much the rate is going to be. We don't know how much we're going to borrow upfront, if we're going to borrow the full $3 million. So we needed to get something in place that gave us the ability to levy, but it's based on, this is how much we're going to take out of the debt service fund, and we could be taking, you know, minimal dollars out of...
Other things.
Other things, or the balance of the debt service fund that we've already got.
Okay.
Good question. Any other questions, comments? I entertain the motion.
Yeah, so I'll move approval of Resolution 1995.
Second.
Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next item, discussion and consideration of sewage disposal options for Hickory Grove Camping Beach and other areas. And it has my name here. I've actually, I asked Mike Cox and Margaret James to work on it, actually, so. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning. Okay, well, as you all know, we've been working for many years now trying to get to a place where we could identify and move forward with some needed wastewater improvements at Hickory Grove. And one of the options that we had been looking at and I guess investing in, biding time with, is a connection to Colo, which does a number of things for us. It removes the burden of wastewater treatment from the park and puts it in a city that already is situated to do so and has an effective system. It also is the most cost-effective route. In a recent meeting with the Colo City Council, it was very clear that in order for us to do that, they wanted some other favorable treatment with connecting a bike trail to the city, and that they have to do some more evaluation on their existing system and some I&amp;I problems that they have. So I guess with those two things, we came away from that meeting with a pretty strong feeling that that is not looking favorable to go in that direction. So with that, we really need to take some time to look at some other options, and we have done that over the years. In 2016, we had, 2015 and 16, we had engineers with Central Iowa Water identify some options for us. Had a litany of different options, including onsite treatments, off-site treatments, continuous flow discharges, and then in addition, a forced main system to Colo. And they established some, kind of some high-level price estimates and cost opinions with all of those options. Of course, the most effective one was Colo again. And then we started looking at onsite lagoon options, and so they had a price opinion on that of roughly $700,000 for the onsite system. I don't know this for sure. My under, I need to confirm this. My understanding is that that was a two-cell lagoon system at that time, and now the DNR is requiring three-cell lagoon systems. And so I speculate that we might have to increase that figure, not only for inflationary differences over the, boy, coming on three years now, but also to increase it by one cell. So that's one, that's one thing that we need to work through. And frankly, it makes another option that we've been looking at more appealing, and that is kind of a modular water treatment system that wastewater system that would provide a better result as far as water treatment. And I would, I will not go out on a limb and say it's less expensive than a lagoon, but it might be comparable. Again, we're early in that, early in that process of identifying it, identifying a cost figure, and so we're working with a firm to do that. What we're analyzing is the Advantex Systems, which is a modular, scalable-type system that you build it to whatever demand you need. At the moment, we have a broad range of cost opinion on that for the, that would replace the existing gravity-fed system portion of the park. So that includes the Breezy Bay Campground, the Ranger Residence, and the Beach House, those three facilities. Eventually, what we'd like to do is update or add wastewater treatment around the rest of the park so that we can connect cabins when we're ready to do that, so that we can add a second campground when we're ready to do that, et cetera. All of the options that I talked about are designed with the idea of being able to utilize or being sized to accommodate a full build-out. One of the advantage of this modular-type system is maybe we don't have to do that all right now, but we can add on as we go. Another thing we're looking at is treating different parts of the park independently and not having one main treatment system. Another advantage of going with a modular-type system rather than a lagoon system is that maybe we'd have room at different parts of the park to treat those needs there closer to where they're, where it's needed. If, for example, if we were to have a cabin at some point in the future, when we have a cabin, then maybe we could treat it right there with more of a residential-type sized system. We have the maintenance shop right now, which is on a septic system. Be nice to get it off of that system eventually, but that's not a real high pressing need right now. The pressing need right now is to address the campground, beach house, and residence, utilizing the existing lagoon, which we need to take offline. What we'd like to do is have a system that's, or have a, whatever system we end up going with, but have that addressed and ready to, ready to go when the, when the lake restoration project is completed. And so at any rate, I wish I could come with some more solid figures, but we're just not there yet. We're just, we're just trying to still work through that and get some better cost opinion data. So any questions at that?
Did we ever have a price, an estimate on what it would cost us if Colo were willing to hook us up?
To what?
Did we ever have a price for Colo if they were willing?
If they were willing, yes. $450,000 is the, is the 2016 estimate. So you can expect some inflationary.
Okay. How long would that bike trail be?
What's that?
How long would the bike trail be?
You know, I probably need to measure that. We're looking at $400,000 a mile. And what Colo didn't express was that they would be interested in entering a contract with us, since it's going to take some, quite some amount of time to acquire right-of-way, negotiate and acquire right-of-way to build a trail. So it's possible...
They have put it over $1 million, probably.
What's that?
They have put it over $1 million.
Oh, definitely. Definitely. And, you know, frankly, when we look at this, the board looks at all of our trail needs, and frankly, what we try to do is accomplish the most, serve the most number of people with the, ideally with the least amount of investment, and that's where you put your priorities. And this, so far, has not really surfaced as a priority for our trails program.
So you said in addition, though, that Colo is not sure if their system could accommodate the park?
So they've got some inflow, what they call inflow problems or I&amp;I problems with their wastewater that they are working toward addressing, and they've addressed a number of those already. They passed an ordinance to give them the ability to restrict or prohibit residential sump pumps from going into the wastewater system. And so they're identifying, isolating, and removing those inflows. They also removed the field tile inflow that they found. So they had, they had inflows into their system that was taking up precious capacity in their system. And so they are continuing to work through that, and I think that they'll continue to, they've got engineers engaged in that, and they'll continue to identify those residences or buildings, structures in town that have sumps going into wastewater, and they'll continue to take those offline, if you will. They don't want to, they're not willing to move forward with us, trail aside, they're not willing to move forward with us until they get some more answers on their inflow problems.
And when do we really need to have to make a final decision?
I'm sorry, can you say?
When do we really need to have, need to make a final decision?
If we were to go to Colo, that could be done by next spring if we are all ready to begin that process, for that process, sign on that process by June. So by this June, we could have a spring operable system to Colo, but we'd have to have a June commitment.
A June this year.
Probably prior to that, probably a May commitment in order to have everything in line. So it's really coming up quickly.
Well, and if the goal is to have something in place when we finish the work, when DNR finishes the work that's going on out there, it means, well, I think we're up against a decision point because if we're going to design and build some other type of system other than putting a pipe in the ground to run it over to Colo, that's going to take us some time. And if we're bumping up against, the next summer is being our deadline, yesterday is the day we needed to make a decision, figuratively.
The staff has done, I think, an admirable job here of trying to work with Colo, trying to gather up the information required for the different varieties, options that we have available. And then, of course, there's all the work that's been done on the Hickory Grove, draining down and the restorations, et cetera. So I personally think that this project, as far as the overall scheme, has been in play for several years, and, yeah, it was very, I felt also, it was very clear when we walked out of the city council meeting in Colo that night, that they had a list, actually, besides the trail also. The trail was kind of a new shocker for a couple of us, but also just, they were hesitant to do anything or say anything until they knew about what kind of true inflow problem they had. And they had been talking about another minimum $200,000 for assist, they wanted from the county for assistance with that. There had been a couple of remarks made to me that $200,000 wouldn't even be close to what they really would expect from us. So, you know, the price is going up, the time is now here, and I think staff has done everything they could. So thank you for that.
Yeah, so I agree with that completely. I think it's time for us, meaning the three of us, to move on from this concept of tying on to Colo. I think we have tried and tried and tried, and I think it has just become evident that, given the timing constraints that we have and now the, what I view as new demands that are being made by Colo, it's unrealistic that we're going to get there. We need to go ahead and move. I'm not in ti, I tend to like the idea of a modular approach. It allows us to address the issues we have today without worrying so much about what might happen tomorrow. We can deal with that when it comes. If we do a lagoon system, we've got to build out to this theoretical capacity that we think we might have down the road. But I'm not, I'm personally not ready to determine which way we're going there. I do believe it's time for us, Laura, to move on from Colo and direct staff to go ahead and bring us a recommendation of which way we need to head.
Okay. Do I hear a motion there?
Sure.
Okay. Second. All right. Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Olson? Aye. Direction is, is to go make a recommendation to us, go back and look at us. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, next would be Leanne Harder, and we're discussion and consideration of the capital improvement plan, starting with fiscal year '20. Good morning, Leanne.
Good morning. What was placed on today's agenda for your consideration this morning was the draft capital improvements plan that has had a couple different iterations, but I do want to point out the changes from the last time you've seen it, and then talk about some possible modifications to those changes as well, given the conversation that just occurred. In regard to the Hickory Grove sewer on page 10, Mike did share with me an amount of, it was a range, as he just stated, and we took the upper end of $840,000. I would suggest that the board consider revising that amount and putting in a TBD, since we just heard the board giving Mike direction to come forward with some different options. With that, then, whatever number or language is considered and added to page 10, fixing the table on page 20 so that they are common and reflect the same amount. And then, thank you to Deb Schildroth for pointing out, somehow, page 13 is an extra page of page 12. It's the same as page 12. Earlier versions did not. I don't know what the Adobe gremlin got me. And then, in fiscal year 2021, we do have the sewer expansion for Hickory Grove Park. I believe Mike did indicate via email that we could go ahead and remove that one out. So that would be on page 14. So the primary changes would be on page 10, the amount in regards to the Hickory Grove sewer, and then the accompanying table on page 20, which will probably be page 19 once I remove that extra page 13. And then on page 14, removing the Hickory Grove Park sewer expansion and the accompanying language in the table later on. And again, no, I did not receive any public input prior to the fifth, and even left it online till today and have not received anything.
Okay. I have a question about the thought of taking that amount from the roughly 840, 850,000 and forty, eight hundred and fifty thousand to a TBD. And the TBD in general bothers me because then we've got a lot of, we know the range, but we don't put that in, and instead we just say a number still to be determined. It makes it hard then to really ascertain what resources are we going to need. And I think it makes it hard to the public to know what resources we're going to need on that. So that's why I'd rather plug in at least the eight hundred and forty thousand here as an estimate. We know all of them are an estimate until we get final costs and bids, but that's just one more TBD that then we don't know. People look at the numbers and we know they're not an accurate number, but they're not even a close to accurate number, the more TBD we have.
And if we, yeah, and if we change to TBD, I'll be going back to previous ones and saying, now, what was the kind of number we were talking about? What range are we talking about? And I guess I would agree, in that case, it's good to have, if you're looking at, to have some idea of what it's going to cost, knowing it might change.
I was just looking through, the TBDs we have are for the, for fiscal year 19, the Army Corps of Engineers land acquisition.
We know that, and we know why that's a TBD. It doesn't help with the public to understand or us on a final number, but we know that.
And then the administration building infill project.
All right. For 19 or for 20?
For 20.
All right. So what about the Justice Center remodel?
And that one as well. I was getting that one.
See, and that's the other one that I know, we don't know exactly what it's going to cost, but we have some kind of idea, basically from what Joby and the county attorney have been working on already, don't we? And I'm looking out here, Melissa's not here, maybe.
So I think we have an idea on the county attorney's portion of that. I don't think we have any idea on everything else.
Okay.
And honestly, so I would actually be fine, as we go up to 19, Corps of Engineers, we've sent them a check for how much?
One hundred and fifty-two.
Okay, so I would be fine if we stick the one hundred and fifty-two in there. They've got to show, they've got to show more than that if they're going to try to come get more than that from us.
Well, my understanding from our discussions in the budget was that the one hundred and fifty-two period is dead gone. And this is for anything else they're going to want.
Yeah, so.
That was my understanding through the budget work sessions, and I don't see.
So I think practically, that's true, but they've still got to show, that one hundred and fifty-two, they've got to show that that was the cost involved in transferring the ground. They don't get to just keep it. Now, realistically, are they going to send us any money? Absolutely not. They're not going to send us any money back. But they, for, to go over that one hundred and fifty-two, they've got to make a bona fide case that they truly spent more than the one hundred and fifty-two. Mike, am I right or am I missing on all that?
You're right. The only caveat, the only caveat there, I would say, is that that one hundred and fifty-two contemplated that we were going to, that we were going to address the cultural survey, the Phase One archaeology survey. And that is predicated on, frankly, some assistance from the Corps. And thus far, we haven't had that. And so if we end up paying for that survey, that's not included in that one fifty-two and that is going to be somewhere around four to fifty thousand, which would be in addition to the one fifty-two. So, yes, our agreement with the Corps says that it will be one fifty-two. They have to justify and come back to us for anything more than that. But then there's this other outlier as well.
So if we made it two hundred thousand, we'd be getting somewhere close, is what I'm hearing. And two, when's the last time we got an update from them on where we are in process?
Two weeks ago.
And what did they?
They're actively working on it.
Okay.
They're working on it in-house. I will, I will say that, that their project manager is putting a concerted effort forward. It's the first time in the history of working with the Corps that I can say that.
Good.
So I feel good about that. I still feel like it takes a lot of communication to get going on this archaeo survey, which time is of the essence now.
What was the clock that we triggered when we sent them the check? We triggered a clock?
Two years.
And where are we in that two?
October of this year is the end of two years.
I was going to say, so I don't, I don't want to put any back TBD, the two hundred and fifty. I'd rather put like a forty or fifty, whatever the remaining is, because we've already sent.
So you're saying that was eighteen?
That would be.
Good. Yeah, so I would suggest us put fifty in, just going back to Loris's point, we need to have as many numbers in there as we can, and I think fifty is a reasonable estimate of what we've got left.
And thank you, you too, for working so hard on that for so long. And you too, Lisa.
I would support putting fifty thousand in there if the one fifty-two you're saying was FY eighteen, please.
Yeah.
Yeah, it shouldn't be in here then. I agree.
Yeah, so I don't see a way for us to remove the TBD on the Justice Center project. I think you also said we've got a TBD on any kind of expansion to this building. I don't see any way that we could do anything other than a TBD on those at this point. But other than that, hopefully, we've got it cleaned up.
So we can leave the eight hundred and forty thousand in for the Hickory Grove sewer for now?
I'd be fine with that.
I'm hoping we're going to do better than that, Mike.
Yeah.
Well, it's an upper limit then.
Yeah.
It's an upper limit then. And that tells us that.
So we're leaving it.
So I would move approval of this with the noted changes.
And I would second that.
Okay. Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Olson? Aye. Thank you.
Could I ask just one question of you, Leanne? Twelve and thirteen being duplicates, which is the total for the projects in FY twenty twenty then? Is it six point five or four point seven? Just save me doing the math.
I think it's six point five. If I can go back and check the spreadsheet.
Okay, thanks.
Make sure I have the right page.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Leanne. The next item on agenda is discussion and consideration of a memo addressing meeting with RDG Ames's Comprehensive Plan Consultants and Jerry Moore and Deb Schildroth. Oh, Deb City. I'm sorry, I didn't know, you've got, I've got Jerry on as a committee, but I didn't know. If you both were going to talk or not.
Yes, planning staff and others were invited to meet with RDG, the consultants hired for the City of Ames to work on their comprehensive plan. Deb, Amelia, myself, Marvin Smith, the chair for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and three representatives from RDG were at the meeting. We only had an hour. It was very short, but time went very fast. Before the meeting, we did request, I think through Deb, input from the board, if there were concerns or comments that you would like us to raise with RDG. Supervisor Merkin did provide some input, which Deb did share. The points, she had three points. One is whether or not the plan adequately addresses sensitive areas or other environmental issues, whether the plan adequately addresses transportation infrastructure, and then issues with regard to areas that are just outside the fringe with regard to residential development, whether that's adequately addressed. So we put together the fine points in the memo. We started off by providing some input on the plan, when it was adopted, that in 2011, the three entities adopted a 28E agreement, which was a five-year agreement that got automatically renewed for five years. And then so in 2021, the agreement or the, the plan is going to expire or it's going to need to be renewed. Additional points that we covered are that the plan, from a staff's perspective, provides adequate direction on how we are to handle requests to amend the plan, whether it be in a change to the map or the written document, how we deal with subdivisions, annexation requests. The policies are pretty clear about what we are to do. We also provided some feedback from some frustrations that were shared with our staff, from property owners, from developers, with regard to the process to amend the plan, to do development improvements in certain designated areas, that because they're working with three entities, it does take some time. It is a cumbersome process. We also talked about probably the most impactful change, which has been the east industrial expansion and what that will do to the area and to the economy once that gets going. We brought up the north review area that planning staff did, Story County Planning Staff, looking for areas of opportunity for future change, given support from property owners, given market conditions, giving, given support from the two other entities. We also talked a great deal about transportation planning. There was a lot of focus primarily on the north end than any other area. Concerns about congestion, limited north-south access, the need for improvements with existing systems, the need to, you know, to take a look at whether or not additional transportation systems are needed on that north end. We also brought up the transportation impact analysis ordinance that the county passed, and we think that that's going to provide some relief in at least looking at projects that are proposed in the fringe to get an idea as to what the, you know, traffic projections would be, to get to, you know, how that'll impact existing systems and what improvements might be needed, and eventually who's going to pay for the cost if improvements are needed. Housing came up. The consultants wanted to know if we were aware of any current housing needs assessment. And other than the information that's in the Ames's Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted in the nineties, I think there was a renewal in oh eight or oh nine, and then the information that's in the 2040 Mobility Plan, we weren't aware of any current, but Deb did bring up some information about the Housing Trust group that has been formed and likely that's something that will come from that work or from that group. And then, so the transportation discussion kind of led into trails, planning, comments. We talked about R38, the improvements that were made along Hyde, which led into a discussion for maybe a need for a trail system along 190th. But just generally that there's some work that needs to be done there with incorporating trails into the existing system. And so after the meeting, it led to internal discussions because of the, some of the points that were raised, we dug into our archive records and came across a memo from 2013 that really kind of hits on some of the things that were discussed at the meeting, some things that have been discussed and been brought up by Planning and Zoning Commission members, by the board. And so we thought it was relevant to put it in this memo. Some of those things are whether or not the urban residential areas match growth projections. The urban residential areas are generally close to the city's corporate limits, whether it be Gilbert or Ames. These are areas that are supposed to be prime for development. If we have a request for development, the idea is that they would be annexed and developed under city standards. Do we need to review growth priorities? Ames has documentation for growth areas in the north, northwest and southwest. There doesn't seem to have been too much activity in the southwest area, so maybe is it time to take a look at those? NPL planning, which is very timely because the NPL is looking at updating their long-range planning document. So with that work that will be done there, you know, could some of the key components be brought into Ames or the fringe, or can we at least reference some of the work that gets accomplished with that? Another item was the Highway 30 DOT closing of the highways and the at-grade driveways from I-35 to Nevada. So is it a time to take a look at the land use along those areas? There's some questions about the rural water systems and city policies, taking a look at that. And then lastly, is there a need to look at whether we permit certain residential development in natural areas? I think for the most part, we've been, you know, the policies state that they're not supposed to impact natural areas. The county's ordinances allow a limited amount of impact, up to fifteen percent for a driveway access, footprint of buildings, that kind of thing. So that's another thing that was in the 2013 memo. But after the meeting, the consultants did indicate that they welcome the board supervisors to, you know, to meet, if you're interested in meeting, to talk about concerns or issues in the fringe. That is to be done through their planning and development director, or they would accept a letter from the board. They're taking public input through March, through their comprehensive planning process. So I guess that's all that I have formally. From a planning staff perspective, we think the fringe agreement is solid. It's time, though, probably to look at some of these issues that have been raised by our Planning and Zoning Commission and by the board. But we think it's a, it's a very important document. I think it's very essential for planning. It's really what good planning is all about, and I think we should be encouraging our partners to, you know, start thinking about getting ready for the future and updating it.
Wow. You put a lot in an hour and you did a great job, you guys, putting together that list, you know, and it sounds like you advocated very well for the plan. Very impressive. Thank you. So my, my question back to the board is, do we want to do anything to try to talk to the consultants ourselves, or do we want to wait until the council itself starts to look at what the consultants have put together and provide input? And that's just what I'd gone down and talked to them a little bit about, to Deb and Jerry as they got ready for this, was, you know, where would the supervisors weigh in? But certainly I'm going to open it up to the board for any questions, any comments or anything.
So I'd be reluctant to have the board of supervisors as a body weigh in on the Ames Comprehensive Plan. That's Ames deal.
Okay.
Now, I feel we need to be weighing in on whatever impact that comprehensive plan might have on the urban fringe plan, because I, I'm one of those that I believe we're in real danger of losing the urban fringe plan over time. One thing, you mentioned the 28E, Jerry, that 28E is pretty clear that any entity can get out of it at any time that they want. So it's not like we're safe till 2021. And I think we're in real danger in 2021, depending on where this comprehensive plan goes and how the relationship, particularly between Gilbert and Ames continues. There were some hard feelings from a previous action between Gilbert and Ames. And as we see Ames continue to push to the north and Gilbert start to a little bit push to the south, we're going to see more of that friction. I, I believe we're better, all of us are better, for having, having the urban fringe plan, and I would hate to see it go away, but it's unrealistic for us to think that we get to use the urban fringe plan as any kind of hammer or in any way like that. And so I'm really interested, I'd be really interested in each of us individually maybe talking to the consultants and sharing our, our ideas, but I would be hesitant, Loris, for us to weigh in as a body. I just think that's overstepping our, we wouldn't want another city council to weigh in on one of our plans specifically, that we'd want them to weigh in as we've done here. I think we need to be really interested in the urban fringe plan and what impact this updated comprehensive plan is going to have on that.
Well, last year, I spoke to three of the six Ames City Council members to remind them how important the plan was, but actually, we were discussing housing itself. I mean, that was the main meeting. So I'm comfortable, you know, with doing that individually, and then if we want to go talk to consultants individually, I'm looking for the best way for us to make an impact upon understanding how important we think the Ames Fringe Plan is to, you know, orderly development and maintaining some principles. That's my thought.
So would you be willing to, and be able to set something up for us to have those individual sessions, maybe a day that all three of us were free?
I think we.
Or how would we go about that?
Well, I think we're supposed to work through their planning and development director.
Oh, through, through the cities, through Kelly.
But we could do that, if you want to be individually.
Yeah, so I've already shared, I've already shared my thoughts with the city individually, and I would encourage the two of you to do the same as you see fit. Loris, I think it would be appropriate for us to have a letter approved by the board, underscoring a few of the points that Jerry and his staff make in here, but also. underscoring a few of the points that Jerry and his staff make in here, but also really hitting hard on how important we think the Urban Fringe Plan is and how we would like to see it continue.
I like that idea. Supervisor Merkin, okay. So if staff and I could work on that, the three of us, and I know I've got two good writers sitting there who have just expressed those points, but, and put it on the agenda for the 26th, is that comfortable for everyone? I know we've got a lot coming on the 26th agenda.
Would it be in the same location as an action item consideration?
Yes, yeah, yeah. I would want the board to give final weigh-in on maybe something they feel has been missed, and then we can get out. So, okay? All right, great. I'll touch base with you guys afterwards then, all right? Thank you very much. And any final thoughts before we move on this? No, all right. So now we're going to invite, once again, thank you, you two, man, you really did pack a lot in, so that's good. Leann, coming on back up, and we're going to talk about the Homebase Iowa program.
I think it's still working. I provided the board with a chronology of events sort on how the Homebase Iowa program came to be in Story County. I'll just quickly highlight some of those and give you some updates I've received from the Ames Economic Development Commission to via Brenda Dryer. The 2015, in 2015, Story County did receive the designation of a Homebase Iowa community. It is county-wide, so all the communities within Story County fall within that designation as well. On behalf of all the communities in Story County, the county did adopt a resolution, which is a requirement of the Homebase Iowa program, and did put signage as you come into different, along different transportation corridors into Story County. It says, "Welcome to, we're a Homebase Iowa community." We also had, at that time, the Homebase Iowa program from the state had a number of, had a number that, a target number that we had to achieve for businesses to register as a Homebase Iowa community. That has since been removed as a category, but we did meet that requirement. We also had to create an incentive package, which I'll get to shortly. And then Governor Branstad did visit Story County that year then to hand us the designation. The incentive package that was initially adopted by the board is called the Welcome Home to Story County Relocation Assistance Program. It was budgeted $10,000 initially. It had a number of eligibility criteria, which I did outline. I'll get to those while I talk about the program modifications shortly. In addition, we, Story County contracted with AEDC for the Workforce Development Contract, and part of that contract is to really, to assist Story County with the Homebase Iowa initiative. The marketing materials, maintenance of the database of inquiries, really be that conduit of the state then to Story County. In 2017, in the fall, Brenda Dryer and I attended the Homebase Iowa Summit. We learned a lot and came back really kind of very energized. At that same time, SCALE, Story County Active Learning Experience, I think I got that correct, was just up and going, and they were asking for projects. So we, Story County was able to get SCALE program students to come in and look at the Homebase Iowa incentive package we have and offer some suggestions. They did review the incentive packages of all the Homebase Iowa communities throughout the state, presented the findings to the board in November of that year, and they did recommend, which the board did approve, then some modifications to the eligibility criteria. I may go over these quickly. The criteria include, right now, I'll tell you how they were modified as well. Be located, relocated to Story County, establish Story County as a primary residence. This was modified. Real estate being purchased must be located within Story County. It used to exclude within the boundaries of city Ames. This next one was removed. Be employed in a full-time position within Story County, and the qualifying job must meet middle or higher skill job levels. Again, that one was removed. Be an employee of a Story County Homebase Iowa business, that one was removed as well. This next one is modified, applied to the Welcome Home to Story County Relocation Assistance Program. What was removed was within 24 hours of military discharge.
Twenty, twenty-four months.
Months. I'm like, wow, yeah. And then lastly, this one's removed as well. The real estate to be purchased is financed through Story County Bank. So in essence, what we have right now, the criteria, is they have to be relocating to Story County, established as a primary residence. The real estate being purchased must be located within Story County, and they must apply to the Welcome Home to Story County relocation. They must just submit an application. I can't talk today. Since 2017, we've had, through the Ames Economic Development Commission and the state, 227 resumes matched to Story County and Story County businesses. We now have about 180 Homebase Iowa employers, which is an amazing amount. The goal is to have 200 by the end of 2019. And since all these modifications were adopted, we've had a lot of interest in this program. Up until fall of 2017, we'd had no one apply. Fiscal year 18, we received three applications. One was not funded. It did not meet the qualifications, and a little under $5,000, $4,781.50. This current fiscal year, we've received six applications and funded five. Again, one individual requested payment in advance, which the program is a reimbursement program, and we are at $9,281.57. The amount budgeted is $10,000. I received another phone call yesterday, and I did reply back, said, "I'm bringing it to the board today, and I'll update you following that conversation." But what we've been seeing is some of the applications, applicants don't, are not necessarily coming in for, at those middle or higher wage incomes or job levels. And we've had some inquiries of individuals coming to Story County that just are not even working. We have some retirements. So it really has become a program strictly for relocation and has, in essence, lots of workforce development component. That truly is what this program was intended and set out to be, from the state level on down to local jurisdictions, that embrace the Homebase Iowa concept and build incentive packages. That workforce development piece is starting to dissolve, in my opinion. So I did have a opportunity to talk to Aaron Revers and Brett McLean with Veterans Affairs. Sometimes they're the first contact into the program, or me to them. It is managed through the Board Supervisor's Office, the Welcome Home to Story County Iowa program. It leaves us with some questions, especially one regarding the budget. At that $10,000 amount budgeted, and we always, the board said that that was a budget amount, do we basically quit accepting applications for the remainder of 2019, fiscal year 2019 through July 1st? I don't want to use a moratorium word, because that's not appropriate, but delay till then, especially given the light that the workforce development component has weakened. And are modifications related to that eligibility criteria required? Do we need to go back and maybe add or modify the employment requirement? Or modify some tie in the family unit, familial unit, to a Homebase Iowa business, now that we know we have nearly 200 businesses? I don't have the recommendation for what that would look like yet from the eligibility criteria. So with that, I'm recommending that we establish a working group that would include Aaron and Brett, myself, Deb Shildross, and either Brenda Dryer or Sinee Dyson, is that how you say it, from AEDC, to review the recommendations, to review the criteria and bring back recommendations later this spring. So the first two questions, the two questions before the board is, what do we do when we're at the upper limit of the budget? Is that $10,000 it, or is there any flexibility yet this fiscal year? And then along with that, the concerns with the eligibility criteria.
So I have a question to your question about the $10,000. You said it was the budget limit. I remember us talking about if more money was needed.
Right. That's what I meant.
Come on back. Okay, all right. That's what I meant. I don't remember a standard.
No, no, I'm just, a budget amounts.
All right.
When we did it, it was intended, not that we're, this board gets to decide what this board wants to decide, but it was intended at that time as simply a placeholder, and the reason that we relaxed our criteria is because we were getting no applications. And so it just made sense to relax our criteria. Anecdotally, if you can't tell me specifically, can you anecdotally tell me how many of the seven that we have, that have actually participated are working in Story County, and how many of them are not? Because it was intended as a workforce component. Would you say half? Would you, I mean, again, if you don't have the exact numbers, just gut feel?
Yeah, I'm thinking of the names right now.
So while-
Five of the seven that we've funded, I do believe, I know definitively three of those seven are involved with a Homebase Iowa business.
Okay.
I think the other two, they're spouses. Someone in the family is involved in it. The ones that we did not fund were ones of great concern. They didn't even come before the board for funding, especially the one that wanted reimbursement.
Yeah.
And I've received a number of inquiries, well, now a week goes by, and I don't have maybe two or three, that is viewed as just an outright grant program, and that is not the intention.
May I ask you where those people are coming from? Because does it mean we need better education through the chamber, which I'm not accusing, I'm just saying, you know, are they coming to the chamber? Are they coming to the VA office? Or have they heard about it on the street?
I don't know that I can, I can pinpoint where they're not coming from.
Okay.
And that's what's really pretty amazing about this program. So the touches that Story County have are definitely through the VA, but then all the resumes are matched through the chamber and the state. I send a Welcome to Story County letter with the information. None of our applications have come from that practice, so I don't know if that's worth my time to do that. And the chamber and I are sending out the same, to the same pool of applicants. I know one of our participants heard of the program directly through an employment offer from Story County. I know two are from their employer, who's a Homebase Iowa business. I know, I know for sure one did come through Veterans Affairs. And I, and both Brett and Aaron do accept on the job, they now understand that there is a workforce, it is intended as a workforce development initiative, rather than just a way to help veterans relocate to Iowa, in Story County in specific.
And I assume the working group would be looking at that, in that question in more depth. When do you think the group would be coming back to us?
Probably late spring.
Okay, and you have one, you have had one inquiry.
Received a phone call yesterday.
Okay. If, so 9,200 so far divided by seven individuals is 1,300 average. If we up this to 12,000 for this fiscal year, that would give you a potential on that average of serving two people, two more.
They can request up to 2,500. We had one applicant, Lisa's not here, but I think it was $181 is all they received. So that really brings the-
That skewed it.
Yeah, it does. But most of them have been the 1,800 on up to 2,500.
So my question is the need for a working group, all right? Because we have now here, five plus two are eight, at eight funded so far in two years. And we, sitting right here at the board table, already asked you to narrow down pretty much some of the key factors, I think, that the working group would start with. So I looked at how big the working group was compared to how, how few people we've got in the program. And so I would like to cut down the working group, if you'd like to go back and examine, or if this board feels it's not doing what it's intending to do. And I actually went in, this is a rough estimate myself, but if we form this working group, and I don't know what it's costing the chamber for the person, it's $173.50 per hour for our four staff people to meet. I took everybody's salary. I mean, it's a very rough number, but literally, we'd be paying about $175 per hour with benefits factor then, for four people to sit down and analyze eight, eight applications. And so I just am looking at this, can we cut down this from a working group to more of a, just a discussion here, if we even have enough data to really know? The fact that someone comes to you and inquires or applies, and they don't meet our criteria now, is just, that happens. Thank you very much, but this is a workforce-based program. If that's right, if the board wants to stick with, that's what Homebase Iowa is, all right?
And that's what, right now, we don't have a workforce criteria in there.
So one consideration would be to shut it down entirely, or re, or add, we could add back in the workforce one, which, for me, is, I mean, that's part of what the program's about, right? I don't know how we got, we get away with, after we made the changes we did, all right? How do we still justify it being a Homebase Iowa program? Are you with me about that? So if that's a suggestion, let's look at that. You just did in your head that most of them are actually, that we funded already, have been with the, have been workforce connection. So I'm a little weary to ask a whole lot of people, spend a whole lot of time on it.
And that's because there are a number of touches on individuals that, once I explain to them what the Homebase Iowa program's about-
Yeah.
-they don't follow up, especially given it's a reimbursement basis.
Okay.
So I think that I have, I should do that. I have not gone through my emails. I keep track of every time I get at least an email, and I email them back, or I get their contact, and I send them an email, how many times I've sent them the program guidelines, and this is, here's a link to application. If you think you meet the eligibility criteria, let me know. We'll walk through the process. But there are a number of those that don't actually go through the process of applying.
Okay.
I'm not sure if the number of people on the work group bothers me, but what we might want to think about is what specific direction we might want to give the work group. And what I'm hearing is that the direction, maybe a direction could be, is it going to be a valid workforce program? Are there ways to change it to be a valid workforce program? And if not, then, you know, then I think it's obvious that we shouldn't be doing it.
And Brett and Aaron are both included with, maybe this is what you're, the likelihood of them both attending a meeting may not be great.
Good point.
But we want, in talking to the both of them, they've both said, recommend both of our names so that they can keep a continuum going.
My only comment to this is, informally, Leann and Brenda Dryer and I have met the last couple of years just to review criteria, based on the number of applications and the amount of funding that people have asked for. And so it's really become more of a routine type of process. We have, we had one meeting in each year, and then we usually do the rest of it through email and then bring the recommendations forward. So it's really not an ongoing kind of thing. It's more just once a year, let's take a look at the criteria. Is it really meeting the need that the board has set forth? And I do think a VA representative would be valuable, since we are starting to see people come through that department and inquiring about the program.
Okay, thank you. That helps me shift my visualization. I see working group, and I think, you know, several meetings and everything, so. Okay, so it's really back to what Supervisor Merkin is saying in part, is what kind of direction do you want from us about this? I have a follow-up question to Leann about when you say you get these inquiries, roughly, since you can't go count right now, okay. Are we talking about we're getting three inquiries for every application, or five inquiries? You know, how much of your time is spent just responding to people who never call back or follow up? or follow up? Those are two questions.
We need to reverse that, I think.
Yeah.
For inquiries, how many, how many inquiries does it take to get one application?
That's good. That's well spoken.
I should have looked. I generally get two to three a week, believe it or not. Actually, I shouldn't say that's consistent, two to three a week. It's like an ebb and flow. And I don't know if it's dependent on a meeting that's occurring, or they're talking to one, the veterans are talking to one another, but-
But that's something you could look at and bring back.
I'm trying to, I'd have to look at that.
How does, how does the board feel about the fact that it's, if it's not work-related, either through the veteran or a veteran spouse or partner, then it's really not Homebase Iowa? As a, as a bottom-line criteria? I mean, because if I heard Leann right, some people don't understand that it's workforce created, she's getting more inquiries.
I've had some people say, I don't even know what Homebase Iowa is. And right there, that's a red flag for me. If they're asking, inquiring about our Welcome Home to Story County Iowa program, that's through the Homebase Iowa incentive package that Story County has put together, and they've not taken that step to go and sign up with their resume on Homebase Iowa, and are actively seeking some form of employment, again, in the familial unit or whatever that might be, that, again, is a red flag.
So two thoughts. One, one that I think we need to deal with, her Linda suggests a budgetary amount, I'm going to suggest that we should, just should not have a cutoff. If we've got applicants that, that meet the criteria, then we ought to fund the program. It was our intent that it was going to fund between four and six a year. It looks kind of like that's what we're getting close to hitting now. I think, so that's one thing. Second thing is, I think it is absolutely time for us to go back in and look at the qualifications. It's absolutely intended. It's been intended. I think today, it's intended to be a workforce component, and I think we've lost something by removing that it be an employee or a spouse of an employee of Story County. And so I'd like us to take a look at adding something like that back in. But in my mind, it's, one is pretty immediate, it is, are we going to continue to fund the program? I would suggest that for the rest of this fiscal year, we fund it. If we get an application that meets the criteria, we fund it and figure it out. And then going forward, we take a look at what our criteria are, and I believe we need to get back to workforce. And then if we see a real drop in our number of applicants, then we go in and we adjust it again.
So what was the maximum amount?
2,500, 2,500.
With that maximum, I can go with Rick's suggestion about, we just, we fund the ones that are eligible this year, because we've got three months left in the year, we're not going to. But then the work group, I think, should address how we would, how we would, what kind of criteria to put back in regarding workforce. I think there are some things that were taken out, it sounds like it's good they were taken out, like a Story County bank, some of those things. If we're looking at workforce, just bring us some language, and bring us some thoughts on how you might be able to get people, you know, into the program better, or get people attracted to the program better. Is that realistic?
And it'll be our opportunity to look back at maybe how some of the other jurisdictions have dealt with their incentive packages too, since we looked at them two, a year and a half, two years ago.
Sure. So I agree, I agree with Linda, but I would just say that I believe we're going to control the budgetary side of this by controlling the qualifications, the criteria necessary to go through it, right? Because if you want to make it all comers, we can sure do that through the qualifications. And if you want to really restrict it down so that it's very narrow, we can do that through, through the qualifications. I, I still believe, you know, if we get to where we're drawing a whole lot more than 10 a year through this program, then probably the qualifications are too loose. And if we're not getting anybody applying, then they're too strict. But I also would say this, I don't think that we need to draw a line and say the only value is when somebody applies. Because I think the touches that we have on those individuals, both through the AEDC and with Leann, I think that it has a positive impact on Story County, the fact that we're at least competing for these individuals and they're considering Story County. Because I'm going to say anecdotally, some of the ones that you've made contact with that have never applied, it doesn't mean they didn't come to Story County. It just means they never applied to go through this program, and so I think there's value there.
I have one thought here, as the group starts discussing, okay? And that is, do we only give to people who are buying property? And that, I would like you to look at the criteria about maybe signing a year's lease or two years' lease, I mean, there's some, an indication, I think employment's another good way to show it. But there are people who, probably, some of that are just getting out, who are still in the building their family stages, who might move here for a job with a homebase employer, who choose not to, or don't find them economically being able to buy a home, but certainly would go out and rent a $900 a month apartment, you know, and have a lifestyle that is, they live in Story County, this is their home. So that's just one thought. So now, if, we've heard everybody's thoughts, so I think we'll need a motion for the funding part, and then just direction for the rest, since we're not really-
We can't do any more, this is an update, no consideration here.
Oh, shoot, thank you for spotting, thank you.
I mean, I think we're fine. I mean, so budgetarily, as long as we're continuing to approve the claims, we're fine. We're not going to go over total, total dollars, what we're going to spend in FY19. And so going over by a little bit, even one budget lineup, doesn't require any action from us. And I think we've got pretty clear direction, if we're all on board with that today.
I see. Yes, consensus, I hear it, all right. Thank you, thank you for catching the update, so we can't make the motion, but continue to operate and take applications. We're open for business. Thank you. Okay. Time for public forum number two. Public, hi Paula, Dustin's back there. All right, seeing no one, we'll go to liaison assignments committee meetings, updates and announcements. Supervisor Merkin, okay? Supervisor Merkin.
Thank you. I attended a very productive meeting here yesterday, Central Iowa Community Services Administrative Staff Met with Service Providers, to talk about the new core services that will need to be added for mental health and developmental disabilities. And I was getting kind of concerned, as I was seeing all these new core services come, you know, definitions come on, because it looks like we're going to be building, building and building or renting some space to do everything, and some of the core services didn't look that different. And then they added on, there's been a new one added on, which is the access centers, which are like the first stop for somebody in, who gets into the mental health system, and they're supposed to provide certain services. Our staff were looking at this and saying, we have some of those services anyway, do we really need an access center? And the direction that they're going into is looking at something called an access network. So I was, I know they're doing this in southwest Iowa, working on, they call it a virtual access center, but it's recognizing your resources you already have available, what gaps might you have to fill, and then how do you coordinate all of this together and make the decision where somebody should go, without having to have this first place for them to go. It still would require some reliance on emergency departments, but they decided, well, we're going to need that anyway, because we need a medical clearance if we're putting people, you know, if we're putting people in a service, to make sure they're not going into something with a, with an unmet medical need, and then have to move them back to a hospital, have to do this. In fact, one person had a story about, person went here, there, here, there, here, and yeah, a first good medical assessment would have taken care of it. So, anyway, the group is going to continue to meet, realize that we probably do need a lead agency to provide what the access center would do, the decision-making, and also just getting, getting some of the planning done, to get somebody into where they should be. So the group's meeting again here on April 1st, and I think there'll probably be more meetings, but I found it very heartening, because it was finding a creative way to not spend more money on a new core service than we should, really should need to spend, and that leaves us more money actually for services. Don't have to duplicate staffing, don't have to duplicate sites. So it was a very good meeting, and so I want to thank Deb and Carla for their participation in it, and the other services providers here. I think we're going to, I think we're going to make some good progress there, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. I traveled back and forth from Des Moines area a lot last week. I know not as much as Supervisor Sanders did, okay? But, so down at ISAC, just to follow up on what Supervisor Merkin said about, there was discussion on mental health, there were some presentations. The one that I left still befuddled was what's really going to happen with the Children's Mental Health Network. That's the best I can tell you, it was difficult to follow. I was reassured that Carla Webb was in the audience to listen, along with several of the other directors from various counties in our region, and I know they'll get it sorted out, but I, I was confused. There were other couple of great presentations on issues, running from prescription drugs, and how counties can stay money, save money by looking at how we obtain our drugs and the contract we have. And I always find a basic discussion on tax incremental financing interesting, so I brought back some questions for various people, and I put those questions out. I attended the first working group of the new planning for the Central Iowa Transportation Planning Alliance, and there are people from several different counties of SIRPA, which is an offshoot group from what would be considered the Central Iowa Metropolitan Area Group, and we're working on an update on the plan. And we'll be discussing over the next few months, coming back and bringing ideas to various staff members, maybe reaching out to some members of the community groups in the community. This particular update is going to be much broader than the plan they did five years ago, and it is due in September. Also, I think, going to the Capitol, I went to the Capitol on Tuesday morning, or sorry, Thursday morning, with the Ames contingent, and it was Ames Day at the Capitol, and discussion about House Bill 165, that is the one that would change how counties were able to set their levy, cap the levy, and also change what type of property would be included in the levy. There would seem to be a theme running through there. We were able to meet with the governor, the governor was looking at it, did not say one way or the other what she would do in the end, but she did state very strongly that she thought it was worth taking a look at what they came up with. There's been a change about just setting one particular cap, and not using that 78 million average number for the income of people in a large statistical area, the Midwest, and making the formula easier to understand. We briefly got to meet with a couple of the Republican state senators, and a couple of our Democratic state senators, including our Senator Herman Kornbach, and we discussed the same issue with them, it was a little bit different spin on it. And all of those meetings were very short, because they were in and out of discussion on the floor and caucus. Once again, though, I felt that the Ames group did a great job of stating in a very short period of time what some key issues were for Ames and Story County. So with that, I'll kind of wrap it up and call for, oh, sorry, we have one more agenda item now. This is a new item on here, and this was, came from a request and a discussion from Supervisor Merkin, and this would be an update on upcoming agenda items that we know will be coming our way, that may require research and, and planning. So I'm going to let you start it, since you have the clearest vision of this, about what kind of information would you like to share with us today about maybe upcoming agenda items?
Well, we, the watershed work group is continuing to meet, and I think we decided April 19th was the time we were going to bring back several recommendations, and that can be some people that we think should be added, positions that should be added to the work group, maybe an update on where we are in terms of the implementation matrix, because we've been making a lot of progress on that, and just requesting that, you know, that the work group be formally, formally constituted.
Okay. And do you anticipate there's anything that the group could put out in advance, prior to that April 19th meeting agenda coming out, that might help us in having more time to research this?
To have recommendations, written recommendations to the supervisors?
Well, I think that's what your vision for this particular item is, is you indicated you wanted to be sure that on some of these big issues, there's enough time to-
Definitely do that.
Okay, got it? All right, and Supervisor Sanders, anything you know that may require some extra research?
Yeah, so April 9th, I think, let's see, yeah, April 9th, a lot of research on preparing for our annual photo op with the Iowa Games. That's all I got.
Okay, well, that's good, because remember, I'm high maintenance when it comes to those posing shots. So I asked for a heads up on that, okay? March 26th, we are going to be discussing tax incremental financing, and Leann Harder will be bringing forward a possible plan, what do we want to do? We already had talked about economic development before, about what kind of projects we're interested in. Also, if anyone wants to bring anything forward about that Healthy Life Center, as far as another proposal at a lower amount, or something?
Well, my understanding is that we're excluded from that now, that the planning group met, and Story County is no longer part of the Healthy Life Center. I mean, is there more for us to discuss? Or, I know in informal conversations that I've had, I felt like that leadership was moving on without Story County involved in it.
The steering committee had a meeting last Friday, I was not a part of that, but I can do research on that, as far as where they are seeing the county at this point in time. I know things were left last week with whether or not the county would have a special election specifically for this, and I know the steering committee has another meeting scheduled for April 3rd, but I'll, I'll do some more research in terms of what kind of communication they're expecting back from us, or what we can be expecting back from them.
Because I've gotten mixed signals, but you know how it goes when people talk, say things, so just to say that the issue about a separate election or, that's for Supervisor Merkin to decide whether she wants to put on the agenda.
Well, and I would suggest that it's not. I would suggest it's up to the Healthy Life Center, whether they want to request that we consider something like that, because if they don't want us to consider, we wouldn't just put that on, on a ballot issue-
Correct, correct.
...without them requesting, and I've not heard them request that yet. And so just as you're setting the 26th agenda, I'd just like us to be really cautious with what we do in regards to the Healthy Life Center, unless it's coming from them.
Right, okay, and so, yeah, Supervisor Merkin.
I asked for the presentation on TIF, and the reason I asked for it, it seemed like at the last meeting, we weren't all on the same page, and in terms of what was possible and available with TIF, and I just asked for general purposes that we have, they have a presentation, and, because we need to be on the same page as to what's available, what our potentials are, and not just for, it came up during the Healthy Life Center, but for, for other things that happen, we need to be on-
And I'm all in on the TIF conversation, you know, it was, it was frustrating to me a week ago, that some of the wind towers that are still ramping up in valuation were not included in the numbers, and, and some things like that. And so I think there's huge value in us getting very specific on what's there, what's available, and what kind of things we can do. And remember now, the policies and procedures that we have in place in Story County are completely changeable by this board, if this board decides to change. I'm not saying that we would-
Right.
-but it is completely changeable, and there are different mechanisms that you could look at, but we better all be speaking from the same facts, and that's not where we were last week.
And that's where we hopefully will be after we have a presentation.
Sure, I just didn't want the Healthy Life Center combined with that.
Okay, so, all right. I too have requested, I think we did this separately, that Lisa Markley and Leann Harder, and I believe, and actually, Leann talked to Lucy, since we don't know about if Lisa would be going to- So I understand the auditor's office has now been asked, rela- been asked related to TIF, to give us exactly who's online, when do they expire, as far as our ability to pull any money, more money off of them, what, yes, so we're all on the same page, we want to see the same numbers, okay? So that's correct. The TIF policy, I suppose that would also be the time to discuss it. I bring up the Healthy Life Center only from the standpoint that as we formally left it at the meeting, from the 12th, it was that there might be a request for a separate bond presented, and as we left it from our end, that if there was something, a lower amount put out by us, and that was what I said. So if you've talked to someone informally, and now Deb is going to give formal feedback from the steering committee, if they're no longer interested in entertaining any dollar amount from us, through a TIF mechanism of some sort, and Supervisor Merkin's not interested in bringing forward, or like you say, that they consider us out, then that's, that's a shorter meeting.
Yeah, so, and I, so I just have a different understanding of where we left it. I think the only thing that formally happened with the Healthy Life Center is we declined funding at $3 million in 200,000 here.
Correct, that's correct.
That was the only thing that we formally did. Everything else, I believe, we talked about a lot of possibilities, but I think all of those possibilities would be triggered, or not triggered, by the Healthy Life Center planning group, rather than us triggering something like that on ourselves. Why would we have a conversation if they're not interested in us having a conversation? And the only way we're going to know is if they ask us to have the conversation.
Okay, so, I, I hear where you're coming from, I hear the validity in that, just, I, how we left it at the table, is I wanted clarity out there. I happened to have a conversation with someone who left this meeting last week under the understanding that it was still open, and I said to this person, I don't believe it is, unless they want us to come with a.
I think they need to request of us, if they want us to consider something different, they need to make that request of us.
All right, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that, that's where I was ending up, anyway, unless we heard more from them, because I had feedback of, oh, don't do it that way. And, I mean, it wasn't formally from the group, but two people who were involved in the group said they weren't interested in the county putting bond, or whatever, so, I've just decided there's reasons not to do that, and I would agree, if we hear something from the group that they would like us to consider another method, we can look at that.
We're all on the same page, we're just approaching it from a different angle. For my edification, Deb, I'd still like to know that they are not anticipating us being anywhere, that they have decided to let, let, stay there, okay, just so that everybody knows the same thing from the same source. All right, super, thank you very much, okay.
Yes, Deb?
I'm not legal women voters, I'm.
Public, public speaking, come up Paula Thomas, all right.
And in the future, can we, can we move the discussion of future agenda items above public comment number two, because then the public would have an opportunity to comment on items on future agenda, just in the board.
It sounds like you plan to meet.
Okay, you know, I never beat around the bush, I was sorely disappointed last week at the meeting. I think if you are interested and open to funding something, you need to make the overture to the committee. I think you got your up and comes from them.
Do you really?
Yep.
Interesting.
I mean, I don't know, I haven't talked to anybody, I can tell you that. This is my instinct that, like, you aren't interested.
I appreciate your, I appreciate your.
Pander.
Oh, your perspective, I still can't find the money, though, Paula, but anyway, so.
You know, I work in economic development, and I know how the money works. You have to ask the right question to get the right answer.
Sure, thank you for your feedback. Okay, so now, we are good for adjournment.
Who did we adjourn?
Second. I, favor.